All right, all right, here we are. Everybody's smiling here. So I'm calling to order now our regular session of the North Andover Select Board and Licensing Commissioners on this Monday, June 28th, 2021. And we'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance, if we would please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go. Well, we have public comment first. If we don't have any public comment, let's get, let's get to what we're really here for.
I have one welcoming.
Yes, yes, yes. So we are swearing in Lieutenant John Weir. I don't know, we should have said like designee or incoming, but we just want to say as a select board, we so appreciate all the work and dedication which has brought you to this place. Only happened because of the team and I think certainly Chief McCarthy, as we could say that for another couple of days with, with a big smile and with really gratitude. We're happy to, Knight, to have you sworn in by our new town clerk, Don Warren. So, Don, I will give you the wonderful pleasure of bringing John forward.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, John Weir.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will at all times.
That I will at all times.
During the period of my employment.
During the period of my employment.
As the fire chief.
As the fire chief.
Of the town of North Andover.
Of the town of North Andover.
Support and defend.
Support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will obey.
That I will obey.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Of said department.
Of said department.
The bylaws of the town of North Andover.
The bylaws of the town of North Andover.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
And the lawful orders.
And the lawful orders.
Of my superiors.
Of my superiors.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent on me.
All of the duties incumbent on me.
As fire chief.
As fire chief.
Of the North Andover Fire Department.
Of the North Andover Fire Department.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you. The floor's yours, John. Chief, I'm sorry. Chief. As everyone knows, I'm not much of a public speaker, so I want to thank the board, the faith you put in giving me this position, manager Rod Rikus working with me. I want to thank Chief McCarthy and Deputy Rowe, who are helping with this transition, as well as the two administrative ladies that we have in here that actually are the true backbone of the fire department. And all my fellow firefighters here. I mean, we're a team and, you know, I'm not going to let you guys down and ladies, so I'm looking forward to working with everybody in, in the town, and thank you. One more thing. I would, I would be completely remiss if I didn't thank my wife. And my family, some who traveled a great distance to be here too, family and friends, because without their support over the last 22 years, the fire service is different than a lot of professions. There's a lot of nights, calls in the middle of nights, there's a lot of holidays, weekends, a lot of missed events and, and family supporting and understanding that lifestyle is imperative for all of us. And again, thank you.
Everybody a chance to catch your breath. You can sort, we'd sort of love to have you stay. We've never seen so many people, happy people in a meeting, so that's great, but you may have some other things to do, so that would be fine if you want to take, take your time and head to that. Please. Yes.
I actually have one and a half, one and a half, Megan, straight behind me, she's graduating, she graduated, and my daughter Colin over there in June.
My tummy, Fred. You got a fantastic job.
So we'll get to, how do we get the chairs on? We're going to get, the chief's going to be up front.
Oh, thanks. Good seeing you, Bruno. Feel better, right?
How are you? I'm good. How are you?
I'm super happy to be back. Very good hands. Excited to be on the floor?
Yeah, dude. It's been awesome so far.
How's it going?
The ice cream, like I was kind of like, well, why don't I?
There you go. Close your office, go to work. Yeah, it's quite the, yeah. Cover, definitely. All the legal corners are covered on that swearing in. Oh, nice. Well, that's fun. Don't get to, don't get to that too often, do we? All right. I know. Offered to you, you know, I don't know. Kathleen getting swept out with Alyssa too? You guys just like following the party now? Great.
Dick, so I'm sorry, it blew out of my mind, the mention and select comments at the end about the fire department. Make sure you. Yeah, that would be, yeah, that'd be great if you would. Yes, ma'am.
I believe that the library director is here for new business B, and I believe that Alyssa is here, right?
Yes.
For new business C six, if we could take those out of order so they can go home and not suffer in this 9,000 degree room with us.
Do you have air conditioning? Say yes, even if they didn't.
The community should be happy to know.
That's true. That is true.
We are not burning taxpayer dollars keeping this way cool. Why nobody know?
Nor, nor warm even sometimes in the winter.
All good. So we will go out of sequence. So under new business, we have a request from our library director, Kathleen Keenan, to use the Patriots Memorial Park on July 19th, 2021 for a flying high dogs program from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And on July 15th, 22nd, 29th, August 5th and 12th for playing outside activities. Tell us.
We're so excited to be doing things at the library. We're excited to have people in the library, but we, when we were planning for the summer a few months ago, we had no idea would we be back. And so we planned for things to be outside as much as possible. And while we have some space around the library, when it comes to things like dogs chasing frisbees and doing somersaults, you need more space for the dog as well as space for the children. And the Patriots Park really is the perfect location. We figured the dogs will be in the middle and the children and their parents will be around on the path. We've worked with the trainer before. He is a very professional person to work with, very good to work with. The dogs are well trained. The dogs are very obedient. They are fun to watch. So we were happy that we were able to get them to come. We think they're going to be an act. The kids really like this summer.
That's great.
So that's the, the active part in the park. The other activities are Thursdays, we have something called passive play where the children come and they'll get materials and then they'll go over to the park to do something, or they'll go to the park and we'll have, I'm going to call it a yard sign or an age sign, if you've seen them around town for yard sales or like the Friends of the Library using for book sales. There'll be a sign at every 10 or 15 feet that tell the children to do something. One of the obstacle courses is to act like you're a bird who lives in an urban environment. So, you know, you fell out of the nest or, you know, you clipped your wings. So the children have to do physical motions as if they were a bird who lived in the park. So trying to make it fun, but make it active and outside. And of course, we're hoping that either before or after they come to the park, they will come into the library to see us and take out all the new books that we've been buying all these months when we couldn't have them in the building.
That's great. That's great. So we've got to make sure we get the word out on this. We'll get Sarah, Sarah Brushon getting it out there. Just really, really exciting. Any other questions or?
I know my boys will be excited to come down to the park. It's always fun. So we look forward to it. We're happy to have you back.
Yes, we are very happy to be back. Well, we were very happy to have people coming in to us again. We've had wonderful, wonderful comments, compliments from people as they've come back in saying how much they appreciated all of the electronic services, all of the curbside services that they said we couldn't have done it if we didn't have those kinds of activities or opportunities to get things. So we felt lonely without our patrons, but we've also felt really appreciated as they've come back in again to say thank you and to start enjoying what we have. We have a wonderful library. We have wonderful staff. And as always, we thank the board and we thank the town manager, the finance officer, everybody. We have such good support for the library in this town. It's what makes the library such a really good vibrant part of the town. So my thanks to you and to anybody else who might be listening who supports the library in wonderful ways.
All we need is a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll motion that we approve the request. Let's do the memorial library.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimously, make it so. Have fun for all of us.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And we'll also, we have appointments, so we'll move to item six on appointments, which is to confirm town manager's appointment of Alyssa Coning to the planning board.
I had the honor of speaking with Alyssa last week after we were supposed to meet the day of town meeting and we got rescheduled, so we had to move. We had a wonderful conversation and it was actually nice that we had a chance to talk after town meeting because we had a, a long conversation about what we heard at town meeting and how important listening is, especially listening to the community when we're working on, on boards and commissions. So I think it was actually to our benefit to wait. So Alyssa lives obviously in North Andover. She is an attorney. She practices out of Methuen? Did I make that up?
In Boston.
In Boston. I made that up. Thank you. Yes, twice today. I thought you lived in Methuen because every time I went to your thing, yeah. So I think she's going to be a fabulous addition. We did have two people actually resign from the planning board this year. And so we have two new associate, two new full, full members. As you know, we did Kelly last week and Alyssa tonight, and we're still looking for an associate.
Can you say who resigned or?
Sure. It was Aaron and Kate.
We appreciate all their services.
Yes, for sure.
Not always easy. I don't want to scare anybody, but it's not always easy being. I scared her plenty. So she's ready.
Why are their eyes wide open?
Well, I think that's a, you know, stepping forward at a time like this, it's, it's, it's a great opportunity to be engaged and help shape the community. So, you know, I appreciate you taking the time to make sure that board is configured with the people and the orientation going ahead. So I'm absolutely excited to, that you're recommending her. So just need a motion to confirm the appointment. If there are any other questions.
Mr. Chair, I move that the select board confirm the town manager's appointment of Alyssa Coning to the planning board through June 30th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimously welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep smiling. Keep smiling.
For your hard work ahead.
Yes, your hard work ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I could do my thank you preemptively.
Please.
So we can, well, Alyssa, so we want to just thank you for becoming a member of the town and volunteering for the town. It's so important that we have so many great volunteers in this town and it really makes it a great place to work, live and play. And we really appreciate all of our volunteers and everyone that steps forward. It's not always easy, as you know, if you're at a town meeting, but we really do appreciate it and people do appreciate it as well. It's, so thank you very much. And later on, we'll be reappointing a lot of people, so that is for everybody. Thank you, everyone that volunteers and makes the town such a great place to live and keep it running smoothly.
Thank you.
We will, so you are good.
Yes, you can escape to the cool air, hopefully.
So we got the room emptied out in 17 minutes. That's impressive. We went from 60 to zero. Okay. So back to our regularly scheduled meeting here. So we're just on motion to move into licensing, if we could, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we open a meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, five zero, we're into licensing.
We're now in licensing. So we have a request from Deborah Ingalls of Butler.
So, um, we have a request from Deborah Ingles of Butler's and Bars for one day wine and malt liquor license for a corporate dinner on July nineteenth, from five to nine PM, in the tent at Small Black Farm, and a waiver of the police detail. So, um, just so you know, we are not recommending a waiver of the police detail, because the event is at night, and the, um, Lieutenant Lannan suggested that we have it.
Okay, so, so, does anybody have any questions? Does anybody wanna make a motion that would include not waiving the detail?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the request of Deborah Ingles from De- Butler's and Bars for the event, um, as I specified earlier, and that the police detail be required for the event.
Okay, there's, we have a motion.
Second?
And we now have a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote, and, so now that's it. So, I'll entertain a motion to move out of licensing.
Motion to move out of licensing?
We have a motion and a second. I imagine there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now out of licensing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, under new business, we have a request of the North Andover Democratic Committee to use the town common on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, from noon to two PM for a picnic. Nobody here to speak to it, uh, but we do have, uh, everything in our packet.
The application is in order.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pass at five zero, good. And we took care of our fabulous activities from our library director, uh, which moves us to appointments, so circling back. Appointment Subcommittee has been, uh, busy, uh, so we have a group of reappointments to the boards and commissions. Um, I don't know if the Appointment Subcommittee would wanna make any comments just about it, uh, before we made the motion.
We, so we had a lot of people that wanted to renew their seats, but there were some that didn't, so there are openings if people are looking to volunteer.
Okay.
Um, there's definitely, um, opportunities, and, like, um, Dick said earlier, we don't, we run on volunteers. It's quite amazing how many volunteers we have in town, so...
What are the, uh, can you...
Oh, what do we have open?
Yeah, what do we... What's on the, I was just looking at that myself, I know.
I think we have some, is it, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've got ConCom, um, I think we have an alternate on council on aging, cultural council, emergency management, um, elderly and disabled taxation fund committee, the festival committee, the neighborhood conservation district, which is actually the machine shop village, too, so in case people don't know, the patriotic observance committee, the poet laureate committee, uh, sustainability, and, um, the windrush steering committee, so...
So we have enough books for, uh, quorums, but, uh, we just wanna have the full, full board.
Yep.
Okay, good. Well, now that we're, we've done very well as a community, get, moving back, hopefully people feel a little more comfortable maybe, stepping up again, um, and having these meetings, so, hopefully, so...
So are all these reappointments, three-year reappointments?
Yes, I think.
Okay, so...
There, there's no fill-ins?
I don't think so.
You know, with, filling in for someone and stuff?
No.
That's good, that, oh, that was neat.
Yeah, it just doesn't usually...
Usually, there's a few.
Yeah, it doesn't usually work out like that. Uh, so, I'll hear a motion for the reappointment.
Uh, I will move that the select board approve the reappointments to all boards and committees as presented, with all reappointments to the emergency management being contingent upon Corey checks for each member.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, welcome back, and, uh, reference earlier...
Yeah. We won't have to say it again, but yes, thank you all.
Your comments, absolutely, no, we do very much appreciate it. Um, and now, uh, Madam Town Manager, you have appointments to the boards and committees, too?
I, I do, and I'm actually not gonna have you move forward with the Board of Assessors appointments. Um, if you remember correctly, we actually write it some terms last year, so these two folks actually are not up. Um, and the assessor was kind enough to let me know that, so we don't need to move forward with those. The Board of Health and the Planning Board are all reappointments, um, they've each been contacted, as well as chairs of their committee, as well as their staff liaisons, um, and all of them are doing great jobs as volunteers, and we very much appreciate them, so we are appointing John Simons to the Planning Board, Daphne Alva LaFleur to the Board of Health, and Michelle Davis to the Board of Health.
Thank you.
Madam Town Manager, when you talk to them, 'cause I know we've talked about this as a group, and I think I've talked about it, is also encouraging them to rotate the chairmanships.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Very important.
Yeah, we do it.
Yep.
We do it every year.
I always tell them the chair truly sets the agenda, right, and so you really do need to move things up as much as you can, so...
Plus, it's a really great way to understand just that much more.
Mm-hmm. You gotta learn it quick if you're the chair.
Yes. And as they say, pin name. So that's great, um, so we just need a motion to approve those?
So moved. Thank you. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, and then we have a special council appointment through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, of KP Law, and special council appointment through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, of Norris Murray and Polquinn LLC.
And there are Labor Law?
Labor, yep.
Okay, I would move approval.
Great. So we're taking both of those together?
That's fine.
Both, yeah, yeah, okay.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five zero, we're good on that, and, uh, then we have one more, uh, Telly Abernathy to the Council on Aging.
I would move approval.
Telly, she's great.
She was wonderful.
Yeah, she was great.
She knows the place well, she did a lot of exercise classes, told them before. She got all the crew to do the beautification of the front of the building.
She's great, she's full of life, she's great.
That's great, awesome, awesome. And I had a second for that?
Oh, second.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, five zero, so, Telly, now formally.
Great.
Um, approval of our minutes, uh, we first have the open session minutes of June eighth, twenty twenty-one, um, in our packet. Any corrections, changes to that? If not, do you have a motion?
I'll move that the select board approve the open session minutes of June eighth, twenty twenty-one, as written.
Thank you.
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, pass at five zero, and then open session minutes of July seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, that seems like an eon ago now, doesn't it? Again, everybody's chance to read the minutes, we're all good?
No mention of the Chinese food in here, though. Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the open session minutes of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, as written.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, pass five zero. Town Manager, we don't usually get your reports.
I know, it's very exciting, um, three quick things, um, I wanted to thank Joe from our veterans' office for the new veterans parking spot that we have outside, I don't know if you saw that, but DPW installed it last week, um, and they were really excited about it, and they've worked really hard to get that out there, so we wanna recognize them. Um, just a reminder about the festivities, committee is running, ending a Fourth of July event, and it is at noon on the commons. Um, and we do have a heat advisory, um, we have been getting situational awareness advisories from the state on that, just reminding people to check on their neighbors, not leave their dogs or children inside of cars, um, and just want everyone to know the library is open till nine PM the rest of the week, so if people wanted to cool off, we are open with air conditioning.
That's awesome, great, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
That's, that's really good. All right, and now, we come to that time of year where we transition, so we have the reorganization of the board, and, and, you know, as we step into this, I just would like to take a moment, if, let me indulge for a moment, and just say, it's amazing where we've come over this past year, uh, you know, a year ago, we were all remote, we slowly got to having masks, and here we are, a year later, fifty people in the room. And I think that all just speaks to the, the spirit of the town, and I think Madam Town Manager, and Lori, and Dee, and everybody in town, how, how hard they worked, you worked, and, um, I'm just so proud of this board, we're, you know, we're coming out of a year where a lot of folks are trying to dig out, and we're as strong as we've ever been in terms of, not just financially, but I think in terms of the, the connectivity among the community and the care among the community, and that just, I, I hope folks really recognize how special that is, because, uh, I, it's, it's extraordinary to come out of the challenges we've had here. So, it's just been a pleasure to be, be part of that, and, uh, and thank you for your patience and your guidance all the way through, and, uh, but I am really happy to give somebody the opportunity also to learn. So, with that, I'll hear nominations for our next chair.
Mr. Chair, I would move Laura Bates be our next chairman.
Wonderful.
I'll gladly second that.
Would you consider that now that you've been, 'cause you're the first part of the discussion?
Well, I appreciate your, um, nomination, and I, I accept, and I look forward to working with everybody, and moving forward, and continuing to build on what we've done this past year, so I really appreciate it.
Awesome, awesome. So, I guess we just need a vote at this point, if there's, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Madam Chair, designate. Uh, I guess, I guess we can finish, uh, technically, the next step of the process, which is, uh, our licensing chair. Do we have nominations for licensing chair?
I nominate you personally as the licensing chair?
Okay.
I'll second that. Happy to give it up. Hopefully you have an easier time than when I had papers all over the place, at home.
Yeah, you had the degree of difficulty that was...
Oh, my goodness, I think, they were some of the more difficult licensing chair issues that we've ever had in recent years, but you'll do fine.
I appreciate it, sure enough.
You did a great job during really difficult circumstances.
I can't, I'm not expecting so much at home, too, right, like, 'cause we're all home, right?
I was, and it was, yeah.
It's hard.
We got through it.
Thank you.
Well done, well done, well, thank you.
You deserve a break.
One more rotation through, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, we now have our licensing chair, and, um, appointment for clerk.
Um, I would like to nominate Rosemary as clerk.
I'll second that.
Great.
Thank you, Mel.
Ready for that?
I am. All you have to do is read really long.
Yeah, all good, all good, all right, all in favor? Aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And then our last is appointment for our, uh, subcommittees, our appointment Subcommittee.
Um, I would like to nominate, um, Dick and Janice, if they would like to take that on.
I would love to, I just got started, sorry. I'd love to continue on.
Jump back into it, absolutely.
I'd be happy to second that, absolutely. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, well, we all have our assignments, um, I guess I would say I'd, I'd like the, the chair to take...
Oh, jeez.
Take control, I mean, you are the chair, I mean, I'm out, so...
I thought it was still June thirtieth.
Well, you know, it look kinda like in the spirit of the Chief McCarthy, and Chief designate sworn in, we're, we'll kinda duel it for, for the balance of the meeting, so...
Oh, well, thank you.
Well, I would just like to say, Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to thank both of you for your chairmanships, because it was difficult during all of this time, you know, so I'd like to second what everyone else said tonight earlier. It was, uh, you know, and it was certainly turbulent, you know, throughout the year, and ending the year with, you know, town meeting and everything else, so, um, you know, we'd like to thank you for your leaderships.
Thank you.
Much appreciated, you guys made it fun, believe it or not, it really is, really is good, so... I'm sure there'll be a year from now smiling just as much.
And handing it out.
But, yeah, let's, let's have, have a great one.
Does anybody have any selection updates?
Well, I would like to take the chance, and I wish we, um, I should've done it when they were all here, but just to recognize the North Andover firefighters who finished first in the climb for Air Boston, uh, they finished first overall, which is really significant.
Fantastic.
Um, really says a lot about these guys and the training they go through, and, um, you know, the dedication to the job, and, you know, makes us all feel good as citizens to know that we've got guys like that that are so dedicated, and really, um, putting their best effort for everything. So the team, I'm gonna read the names of the team, was Kevin Lindy, David Testa, Neil Patnaud, Sam Byrd, Rob Crane, Andre Wensia, Corey Promise, and Jonathan McCarthy, so congratulations to those guys, and, and job well done.
Yeah, congratulations, thank you for bringing that forward, I did not know that.
Stay cool.
Happy Fourth of July.
Happy Fourth of July, yes, yep.
Do we have a quick review of what's going on on the Fourth, I, I was kinda confused by it today, too, some people were asking.
They're doing a Declaration of Independence reading, yeah, and the festivity committee is running that, and it's starting at noon.
At noon.
And they did it last year, too, so this is the second annual.
So, just to give people hope for the future, so the three hundred and seventy-fifth committee will be hopefully having some more fun activities with, you know, speaking with Jeff Coco, because of the lift was so late, it was really difficult to, to do the regular festivities, but we'll make up for it in, between now and next May, so probably sooner than we think, so...
When is the actual date of the anniversary?
It's May, we've, we're already in it.
We are, but...
Um, I forget the date, I'm sorry, like, the ninth or something, oh, is it on?
Oh, no, that's, oh, that's, the day, no, the end of the...
Oh, no, we don't...
Yeah, no, sorry. She goes back further than that, I apologize.
Mr. Phil.
It's the one at the top, six forty-three. We, we are the original founding of, of North Andover, yes, yes, we are, of the Andovas. Um, so we do have till next May to get everything, but as I mentioned to you before, there will be, um, we're, you know, we're trying to get organized, and we're, they're, you know, and Jeff Coco's heading it, but we're looking for volunteers, we're looking for donations, um, and we will be having a, a gala in October, we've got ladies working on that, and again, any volunteers for any of these committees, we have, the one I, that's really great, is we have a volunteer who is going to put everything, um, on video from the history, people have wonderful stories, or some great artifact from their family, or, again, that it's all gonna be recorded, so, we, generations will have it, um, for years. It will be ongoing, most likely, um, after even, um, the end of this year, because there's so much good stuff that they're hoping to bring in, it's really, really exciting, and talk about a labor of love, um, so... So, but again, anybody's interested in helping out, or, and that same person is also wants to organize some of the children's activities, so... I didn't ask permission to mention his name, so I would tell you, but, um, sometimes, but, maybe next, maybe next meeting, we can tell you who it is, but, um, so, so we will have some fun, it just won't be a couple.
Uh, the only thing I have, uh, I know that the Subcommittee for the Schools has made a recommendation to the school committee, um, so there's a lot of info on their website, if people want, are interested in finding out what, where they're headed, when, what their recommendations are, um, and Little League did a wonderful job this weekend doing an All-Stars event down at Carl Thomas, so it's really what makes us such a great community, I think, and they had such a fun time, so, um...
How did the food trucks work?
They had, Chris Belli was here.
Perfect.
So they were there, and, um, and they had, of course, the ice cream truck and all that stuff, so they had a wonderful time. That's it, that's all I have. Um, our next meeting will be Monday, July twelfth, and other than that, I'll entertain a motion, um, to adjourn our meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
And, uh, all those in favor?
Aye. There you go.
Wow, and it's...
I've been rolling, we're in there.
I said it, so all they have to do is...
Boy, you had an awesome meeting, had a light, though.
All they have to do is turn up the heat and hear them roar.
Yeah, I had secrets.